The way much.
Make a fool of myself for a couple of years.
They want pickleball, they're like, can we get this court figured out to put pickleball in? I'm like, that court isn't even supposed to be there right now. And take it off. Well, you don't know yet because Geico is the lady's insurance. She claims that it was, uh, they'd said it was worth twelve thousand dollars worth of damage. And everybody else is saying it's eighteen, twenty, twenty-five maybe. The car's worth thirty-six thousand, eighty percent of damage. Is its highest ever fix it and then they write it off. My CFO wants to gone, he just hates that car. He's like, we're gonna lose our shirt on this. And he doesn't have anything to do with it because Mike bought it on his own and then made it a company car. But he's like, well, that's the easy way for him to get out of it because he doesn't have the resale value because he bought it for sixty-seven thousand and it's worth thirty-six right now and it's only a year and a half old. And nobody's buying. Nobody's buying used EVs.
Yeah.
Just get killed.
I know, I'm like.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Dodge Charger. But now they called me and said, seeing the fact that you exceeded the minimum maximum property damage claim for Geico, which is ten thousand dollars. There's no money in that.
Are we your partner?
To. Get.
The challenge is gonna be is will they go out and pass.
A rental car out of there. So she wants it to come back.
That's what I just.
What am I supposed to do?
The way I read it is those only the ones that happen at the instead of the city.
My.
Right, but isn't there a statute that allows them? For all of it outside of our.
It's a no-fault state in Minnesota, so you're supposed to, each company is responsible for the first ten thousand dollars of damage.
No.
And then beyond that, you share it. And so Geico's over ten for sure. So they just had to get to ten, so their estimate said that was twelve thousand and then Cincinnati's like, we're way over that. No. Especially that, you know, that radar and something.
Yeah.
It's crazy. Cameras. Yeah, I'll never get that car again. I mean, I'll probably get it picked up, which is fine, but. I was kind of getting used to driving it.
It was prepared to step up in your place. All right, it is six o'clock. Call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for April twenty-second. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Council, uh, next up is the agenda review and adoption. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Um, we have no one signed up for open forum public comment. We have city council minutes, we have the April eighth regular meeting, April eighth special meeting, and April eleventh special meeting. I'll take a motion on those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Sorry.
Opposed, that carries consent agenda, we have items A through J. I'd take a motion or if anyone wants one polled.
I'll make a motion to approve items A through J.
So motion to approve items A through J, is there a second?
Second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Annual reports, we have PD.
Mayor members of the council, you have my yearly report. Uh, you may notice in this one, uh, different from last year's or maybe previous years. Try to have the officers that are doing the reports do a little more personal touch to them and talk about, uh, not only the successes with the, uh, challenges they had throughout twenty twenty-three. Uh, and then maybe more importantly, uh, to try to, especially with the amount of budget that goes into the PD and the amount of people we have doing all this good work, uh, to highlight that, having a showcase uh, of a couple areas, um, that were really important this last year, uh, one of which is Kanan Kimber and Officer Kerry Bonfield and Officer Brennan Olson and the Human Trafficking Task Force. So I'll let you guys decide who goes first, but I'll stand for questions afterwards. And, uh, certainly ask any questions you have for the officers and they're gonna kind of highlight some of the stuff they've had this year, so.
As you can see, Kimber's already doing her job. Went around and said hi to everybody. Um, I did.
She spent a lot of time with Tim, is that indicative of anything?
Um, I do have something written. I usually like to wing it, but I think for the purposes of this, I'll probably just read this and I have a couple things I'll add as we go. Uh, Kimber joined the department September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. At the time, she was a little over four months old. She turned one on April eighth. And in the seven months she's been a member of the police department, she has had a huge impact on the city and on our department. I will not put numbers onto what she has done. Uh, we are tracking that, but I cannot put a number to what she's been bringing to this community. Um, it doesn't represent how much she actually does. So on any given day, Kimber is out making somebody smile. She frequents city hall to make her rounds, give kisses and get her daily belly dubs. Members of the police, fire and EMS have enjoyed having her around. And it's been said that when Kimber is on days off, it just isn't as fun being at work. She has a way of making people smile and break up their day. Sometimes she is just a big ding dong who plays with her squeaky toys. In other days, she's a loving, caring dog to someone who is going through a traumatic event. Um, speaking of ding dong, if you can take a look at the photo up there, that's an accurate representation of her. Um, Kimber knows that when her vest on, she's working. Uh, she is aware that the PD is at home and she knows that she can be playful there as well. However, she knows that when a command is given such as lay down, settle down, she knows what she needs to do. She's been pretty good at sensing my tone, um, as well as other officers and the public's tones, whether or not she can be spunky and playful, or if she needs to be docile and calm. When Kimber has been deployed, all have been successful with positive outcomes. We have not had a negative deployment at this time. She has de-escalated situations, aided people in coming out of rooms that the police were locked out of. She has assisted on assaults, medicals, mental, behavioral health calls and numerous other calls for service. We have also been requested a handful of times at the Child Advocacy Center where she has provided support to children, um, who have been victims of heinous violence, uh, sexual assault, domestic violence. Um, she sits with them while they have their moment to tell their story. We also had an incredible honor of being deployed down to Burnsville and to the Dakota County Dispatch Center following the officers and the fire paramedic that were killed. That was, we have a picture of that. Um, that's at the Burnsville Memorial. When she went into dispatch, it's probably the first time I actually let my emotions go, um, watching the dispatchers hug her and just calm down. Having that dog in the, in the building was amazing. Kimber also frequents the schools and has been requested at a variety of incidents at the schools. For our department, she has been utilized for our officers when they have had a tough call. She brings a toy or gives a little kiss and helps distract them from the situation, and she has won the hearts of many. In addition to her work as a therapy dog, she has become a Sartell staple. She's attended sporting events off duty with me. We just came in hot from a baseball game, so she's a little tired. We also stop at Sartell businesses to visit and she has become a community engagement and public relations dog and loves what she's doing. I often get comments from the public about how wonderful an addition she has been to the department and to the city. I have been part of several speaking engagements throughout the city so that people can learn what the department is doing with Kimber and what her role is. She's often found posing with people for pictures and her social media is quite popular. On March twenty-sixth, Kimber and I completed the certification test and we passed, so Kimber is now a fully certified dog. I was not aware that the training was hap- or the certification was happening. Um, Mike, the trainer, knows that I'm highly anxious about tests and so he chose not to tell me, so I had no idea until he said, congratulations, you guys passed. Um, over the seven months, we trained for two to three hours twice a week and all the training took place locally. We did a lot of training at the Police and Fire Department. We also spent a lot of time at Walmart and Second Street Coffee House. Sartell Schools welcomed us into continued training with the students. And during this training, the focus was on obedience, working through and working through distractions. She was acclimated to many different sites, sounds and people. With the certi- certification test becoming completed, we'll do maintenance training and recertification each year and Soldier Six will continue to donate all of that services to us. Um, again, I can't articulate in the words what she has done for the city, the residents and even myself. Eighteen years into this job, I was kind of frustrated and tired and burning out. And when Kimber came, it gave me a whole new piece to this job. Um, makes me feel much better. I'm proud of everything that she does. Um, I'm just the handler, she does the work. Um, I'm kind of the Uber driver. I look forward to the continued training with her and continuing to develop her skills. This program started out as a pilot program and is growing into something amazing. We have a lot of other departments in the state of Minnesota now reaching out to us to start their interest in this program, including St. Paul, who is a huge department, so it's kind of sweet to have St. Paul reaching out to Sartell for advice on how to handle something, so. Um, we continue to appreciate the support of the city and all the residents and the chief of my department and importantly, all, all the people that Kimber helps. We just want to keep doing that. Um, there's a photo of a girl on the hockey, at the hockey game. I just want to close with this. Um, we were part of the Wild Game for Mental Health Night and this girl came up to us, I don't know who she is, never met her, but Kimber alerted to her instantly, just beelined to this girl and was all up in her face like loving on her and hugging her and this girl bent down and the hugs were mutual. She came back a couple times and then finally her mom came back over to me and she said, I need to tell you, my daughter suffers from major anxiety. Coming to this sporting event tonight was huge for her and she was having major issues and it wasn't going well. She saw Kimber and they locked and that girl calmed down, was able to enjoy the game. Um, her mom phoned, I believe it was our Facebook page and she also posted on Kimber's social media. So I just wanted to leave you with this thought. She said, we met this amazing team Thursday night at the Wild Game. I cannot say enough about them. Officer Kerry was personable and really cares. Kimber is so sweet. My daughter suffers from anxiety and Thursday night had kicked in. Kimber knew immediately and helped her. Thank you Soldier Six for all you do to make these things possible. We are first responder family and grateful for all you do. So I get messages like this often. The police department Facebook page gets messages like this often, so I want to thank the city for supporting this program and, uh, we're gonna continue to, to rock it throughout this community.
Any questions? Ah, get it. You guys have any questions for?
Kerry, how often do you go with Kimber outside, um, Sartell? I know you talked about advocacy, advocacy center. Are other jurisdictions calling you in for?
So we kind of put a hold on that until we were certified.
Okay.
Um, we did go to the CAC, I've probably been there about five times. Burnsville and Dakota County are the only external ones I've gone to. Now that we're certified, I believe that is gonna be extended out, but I think the, what, my understanding from everybody is that this will be primary, so if we don't have staffing, I'm gonna remain in the city, but we're hoping to expand that out if needed.
Yeah, no, I, I asked the question as it's certainly, I mean, as you talk about St. Paul, right, diving into it, it's certainly on the forefront of, of some policing and, and, um, I can only imagine that our neighbors are reaching out quite often or, or attempting to.
So St. Cloud's reached out to me, um, Albany, Stearns County, St. Paul, um, there was another one, I can't remember.
Far, I think Farber called.
Yep. So I've spoken with most of the, the people that are interested, um, just to give them my, my take on how this is going. This program is successful with someone who wants to put time into it and I'm not tooting my horn by any means, but it's, I mean, this program is gonna be what they're gonna make it, so.
Yeah.
She might not toot her horn, but I will. Uh, so this, she knows this, so I can share this and we'll do a presentation later. Uh, the Minnesota Association of Women's Police issues one community service award every year and they've chosen Kerry and Kimber for that award for the state of Minnesota, so. Uh, we present that in May and we'll do something here special too, but just so everyone's aware.
How does she get along with the other puppy that's?
Uh, Echo and her have been acclimated. It went well. Um, Echo's very hyper, Kimber is a very much not an alpha dog. So when Echo comes at her, she flips over on her back and it's just like, but they're, they've gone through the sniffing and the, that kind of stuff, so it's, it's okay.
Are they together much?
No. Just Kurt and I don't work together and very often, but when we do overlap every once in a while, we'll let him, we won't let him off leash. She can be off leash, but Echo won't be off leash.
Yeah.
Until we know how he's gonna react after.
You can only imagine, if it's the same scene, it's at different times during the scene, right?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kerry.
You bet.
Thank you.
God, I remember back to the days of Kerry stopping to play softball with kids to now Kimber, the elevated.
You stop and do that, now she just takes the ball and runs.
Oh, just the el- yeah. No, the elevated, uh, community engagement is awesome. Brennan?
Hello, everybody. Tough act to follow. I don't have a friendly friend to run around and keep me entertained, so I'll do the best I can, so. Uh, I think I know most everybody in here, but for those who don't know me, I'm Brendan Olson. Uh, I've been a police officer for twelve years and here in Sartell since twenty sixteen. Um, October last year, I got the luxury and the opportunity to take over and assist on the Central Minnesota Human Trafficking Task Force. Um, and Wait Park previously held that position and, uh, did a great job with it and so big shoes to fill and so since then, um, I've been, it's been a ton of training that has gone into that. There's been a ton of, um, learning, much of what we do um, is electronic based and starts kind of around technology. So coming from the patrol side of things, we're a lot more hands-on, it's a lot more desk time than I was expecting, but, uh, it's been a great opportunity. Um, we do, there's makeup of the team, we'll just kind of go through that first. Uh, there's three of us investigators, myself, uh, represented from Stearns County and St. Cloud Police Department. Um, also on our team, we have an analyst who's, uh, sponsored by Stearns County, who holds a grant. Um, attorney, county attorney that represents us, um, and we have a victims coordinator that helps us out with, uh, recovered victims of prostitution, things like that. Um, there's three main facets that we focus on. That's gonna be your victim recoveries, prostitution related stuff. John suppression, uh, so John Bye Details kind of ju- uh, John Byers, if you will, um, and juvenile suppression. Um, that's gonna be your online solicitation of minors, your Catch a Predator stuff, for those who are familiar with that show, that sort of thing. So those are the three main areas that we focus on. Um, the grant is based around human trafficking itself, so that's the, the victim recovery, prostitution recovery. It's been, uh, like I said, it's been a huge learning curve and it's a very different style of policing than I'm used to and what I was used to as far as going after drugs and warrants and things like that. That was always my thing that I would do on the road. Um, and now it's much more soft-handed and trying to gain support of those who have lived a tough life, have loved, uh, lived a battered life, if you will, in many, many different ways. See here. Yeah, so like I said, the big, the big thing that we do, um, it all starts electronically, uh, pretty much everything we do. We use resources and tools that scrape, um, the internet looking for ass for prostitution and we look to go out and seek and make contact with those people and try to offer them a different alternative, a different way of life. Many of the victims that we deal with are addicted to fentanyl, that's the big one, um, and they're involved in many different ass- uh, assets of theft and crime that typically, um, just kind of consumes and keeps them trapped in this vicious cycle. Uh, what we try to do is offer them, uh, a different way out. Um, examples of this is, there was many people that we, I now work with, that I used to see on a regular basis at Walmart. They were shoplifting and doing things to get by and stealing things. And I never understood, I never knew the why behind the what, why they were doing in the deeper cycle than it is. You know, I knew they were struggling, but I didn't know how bad they were struggling. And now I have this different picture of these folks that they're doing it to survive. They're doing it because they don't have other options or they're stuck in this cycle. So, uh, we try to do a softer hand approach. Um, statistics say it takes about fourteen to fifteen times of contact with somebody like myself to have a, a victim of prostitution, um, let us, let, yeah, let us help them essentially. Uh, we work with a lot of advocacy centers and a lot of different things to try and help gain their trust and get them out of that cycle. Um, Terbit Refuge is a big one in Wait Park. We utilize them a lot for placements and they are kind of a whole picture, uh, focused and they allow with, help us with housing, job skills, education, uh, all the little things that kind of you don't really think about the whole picture to try and get them to break the cycle. Cause they're fighting addictions, they're fighting mental health, they're fighting different things like that. So we work with Safe Harbor, um, we work with a, a, a ton of different, and, and again, I've been doing this for six months, so all the, all the acronyms and things like that, they're tough to keep down, but we work with a lot of groups that are, um, help us do what we do. The last five months or so, uh, we've been working a case, um, that has involved, um, twenty-two search warrants for electronic means scouring information, uh, contacting people that have been a victim of this one particular trafficker. Um, and he's looking at a life sentence. My life's, my, he's got two prior convictions, um, and it's one of these situations where it's a very smooth-talking, um, convincing individual that convinced a lot of people that he could offer them a better life while feeding them drugs and giving them false promises and taking advantage of things. That they were near and dear to them. The whole goal with our position is to try and reduce what's going on with prostitution in the area. Uh, one of the ways we do it, I mentioned either one of our prong approaches, is doing the John suppression, the John details, the prostitution things. Um, prostitution, just like any other, uh, industry out there, drugs, it's a business, it has a model, right? There's supply and demand. Um, the idea with the John details is if there's no demand, there can't be a supply. So we try to cut off the one side of things by posting ads, posing as prostitutes, the Johns will respond to that, you know, we will meet with them and try to correct the issue through criminal process, things of that nature. The, the third access, which we find a lot of our victims, uh, victimization started very early, uh, in their lives. They started very young. Um, a lot of it started familial trafficking, which I mean within the family dynamic or somebody that they knew. Um, so we do the third part of that juvenile suppression, that online, um, to Catch a Predator style, um, intervention. Um, we'll go on and we'll pose as young individuals, thirteen-year-old, fourteen-year-old, fifteen-year-old juvenile males or females and just be present in chatrooms and things like that and try to eradicate the problem of people coming to us and trying to list us for sexual favors or things of that nature. And the reason behind that is, is when they start victimizing folks younger, they sometimes then turn to drugs, addiction and other mental health issues, which then become down the line prostitution and other things for survival. So we try to take on those three approaches with that. Um, it's been, uh, it's been a big roller coaster, I would say with law enforcement, you know, working the road and it was pretty ups and downs, pretty gradual and I've experienced a lot of highs and a lot of lows with this and there's days where a lot of things don't happen, that's, and that's, there's days where it's very fast-paced and there's a lot going on. Um, it's very rewarding, but it can be also, uh, very heavy at times too with some of the impacts you see from the victims that you work with. And then, and the, when you think there's something good going and then all of a sudden you start to see the declining, it's slipping back to addiction. That's a big, it's a big, uh, roller coaster, that's the way to describe that. So that in a nutshell is the done and dirty of kind of what the task force let me to do. Um, it's been a phenomenal opportunity. I work with some great guys, some real go-getters. We have great support everywhere we go. Um, and it's been, it's been a very rewarding opportunity so far. Different from other things I've done in law enforcement, this gives me the impact of actually making a difference in regards to somebody instead of just having a conversation, having that ticket, you know, to try and correct a small problem or try to fix it on a twenty-minute conversation or an hour of interaction. Now I have this ability to connect with somebody and try to get them through something on a consistent basis. And it's, it's been rewarding, but it's also, like I said, at times it's can be tragic too and it's, I think it builds a person, so. I just want to thank the council and everybody for giving me the opportunity to do this and to have the opportunity to kind of show another area where Sartell can shine and I'm gonna keep working at it.
Hey Brennan, one question, um, and, and not with detail, but can you help us understand and the general public understand the work you do and how it relates to our community? I think oftentimes, growing up in Sartell, living in Sartell, you think, hey, that only happens in big cities.
Sure.
Um, if you can offer anything there?
Absolutely. Uh, it's, the biggest thing I could say is that prostitution and trafficking is everywhere. You know, I just talked about sex trafficking today, but there's labor trafficking, there's all kinds of other things that go on with that and where exploitation, exploitation happens. And I, as beautiful as this community is, it happens here as well in our hotels and, um, our parks and different places, you know, um. I'd love to say I try to keep it out of Sartell, but there's been numerous arrests in town for people who have tried to solicit prostitutions, uh, prostitutes and things of that nature. Um, it's everywhere, you know, ultimately we have to remember that. And where we live is a huge hub to a lot of other places and so it's a just natural gathering point with I ninety-four and twenty-three and.
Thanks. Council, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, quick question, kind of piggybacking off that, um, with this kind of stuff, we all read the books, we see the shows and we kind of just assume there's people like you out there taking care of it. Is there anything that you would, um, say to the citizens either in Sartell or this around area that, um, any helpful hints or ways, I don't think involved, but, uh, help you guys do your job?
Sure. Um, you know, I think we say it a lot when it comes into law enforcement and, and in the community with engagement, if you see something, say something. You know, I think it's important. I think we have to trust our guts when it comes to things. If something doesn't look right, you see something out in the community, it's, it's worth mentioning, it's worth at least making a report. It's not like the movies a lot where you see where somebody just gets stolen and then moved into sex trafficking or slavery or something like that. It's, it starts a lot of times in the home, whether it's a, a boyfriend or, you know, a husband or a girlfriend or, um, a parent. You know, unfortunately, it can happen anywhere. Yeah, but sometimes it masks itself as just simple troubled homes. Um, so I, I encourage our teachers to be, um, active in their students' lives. I think that's a big place where a lot of times it pops up. Um, continue to note those things and, and like I said, say something if something doesn't feel right. You may not know what it is, but it, somebody else can potentially figure that out.
I know that you, the region is central Minnesota as far as task force. Um, it's a much larger problem. I mean, I would go statewide, countrywide, international. And do you have the support you need on, and statewide or, um, even nationally at certain points? I mean, are you working with, you know, those tools and have the capability of reaching out to that?
Great question. Um, we have, there's a, a large network I found over the last six months of people that do this, but not in any given one space is there ever enough of those resources. Um, you know, we're a task force of three investigators and some support, and support staff. And besides us, there's the BCA Task Force and the East Metro Task Force specifically geared around human trafficking. That's the whole state. You know, there's individual agencies that have training and may specify in it, but a lot of times they have one investigator that is geared towards that or maybe two. Um, you know, with this particular case that I just got them working, I mean, it was all hands on deck for four months of constant work, overtime, doing, using different pieces of technology to try and do that. Um, and then when we make some headway, we need resources to help the victims. Um, one particular issue that I ran into is placement with children. Anyone who has children and wants to do it, there's, there's really no place for anyone to go or that will house younger children. And so there's need for facilities like that and there's need for resources to be able to help with different things, you know? It's a challenge just to get them to a point where they're willing to accept that cha- that, that help. And then when you don't have the ability to follow through with a resource to help them, it becomes a challenge to keep them in. So, um, well, I would say that there's a large initiative across the board for, for, to combat human trafficking. I would argue that there's not nearly enough task forces or, uh, dedicated law enforcement resources to look into this. I think unfortunately the challenge is. Um, I think unfortunately the challenge is, is, I tried to illustrate is these cases just take a lot of time and energy, um, to investigate. It's a ton of electronic, um, search warrants and looking through data and cell phones and, you know. Most of the time these victims don't wanna talk with us, so we have to rely on the information on their cellphone to tell us the tale of what's going on, cause that's what everybody uses, so. Um, there's definitely a need for more, um, where you start with that, whether it's the advocacy side of it afterwards or with the enforcement side. You know, I, I, I would argue that I'm a little early in my career to be able to make that decision or to tell you on that. But I could certainly say that there's definitely more need across the state for, for task force like ours.
Something maybe important to highlight, um, that kinda highlights the problem of this. We had to buy a second cellphone for Brennan, just to be able to shut off. Uh, this isn't like, they put the feelers out as a John and trying to do John suppression and like, oh, maybe we'll get one or two pops a week. It's non-stop for these guys. So he needed the ability to shut that phone off and put it away so he could have a personal life too. Uh, but that's the magnitude of the problem even in our area. It just, correct me if I'm wrong Brennan, it's, it'll go all night if you let it.
It's tough to abbreviate the, the magnitude of everything, but he's exactly right, um. You know, we'll put out an advertisement posing as a prostitute and for those first three, four days minimum. My phone is going off every couple minutes, so to, uh, to have my, my work phone. That my partners and other agencies can call when they need me if they're on a traffic stop and something's fishy. And to have that same phone be the one I'm getting texts on, uh, my wife wasn't too happy, so we had to break up that, uh, situation a little bit to try and eliminate that. I can leave that phone downstairs if we're, if I'm, if I'm not working on that particular thing that night, so. Um, yeah, it's a, it's a big problem and like I said, that's why we do, and I think a lot of people wonder why we still do the, the prostitution, the John bus. And it's exactly that, it's the, the demand is that high, so.
Thanks Brennan. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for all you do.
Uh, I chose both those, uh, individuals to present on because they both serve a super vulnerable pieces of our population. Um, and they're obviously both new initiatives for this year. And then to maybe highlight on a regional basis, uh, we're quickly becoming, instead of, uh, a resource sucker, a resource giver. If it makes sense, uh, where we maybe as a really small agency needed these other agencies. Uh, now they're kinda looking at us and Brennan's job in particular on a regional basis, uh, has a lot of people very happy that he's in that role. And that we're able to contribute. Criminals don't live in jurisdictional boundaries like we do as officers and I think it's easy to forget sometimes, um, that those problems can spill into our city. Or already do exist, uh, even when we don't see them, so. With that, any other questions on my report, I'd be happy to answer.
One quick question going through your reports, um, noticed that tra- traffic stops was drastically up. Is that a change in policing or is this one of those years?
I think it's, uh, a couple of different reasons, uh, likely mostly attributed to the age of our officers and being younger. I mean, it's just, it's a pretty well-known in our profession that as time progresses, you don't usually typically make, uh, as many stops. So we have a younger department now making more stops. Uh, the flock system helped with that and, and different offenders that they've been able to target through that as well have, have both boosted, I think, our traffic stop numbers. Which I was happy to see that number go up. I think most law enforcement agencies are seeing the exact opposite. Uh, with the different scrutiny over law enforcement, you're seeing an inactivity level where we're still pretty active in traffic safety enforcement and stuff, so.
Chief, um, for the annual calls for service, maybe it's just how it's graphed, but it, it appears that twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three are pretty similar in number of calls.
Couple hundred difference, but, but pretty close. We re-raised the, again, just a little bit and I'll caveat that with, uh. The system we are using is so antiquated that pulling calls for service numbers or call numbers versus ICR numbers. They should be one and the same in our world and they're still not in certain counties and that, that's partially related to the. So I think that's a relatively, like, we knew we had a little rise, not a, a, a huge rise. Uh, but the next three years will be really telltale when we get the new system going to really track those numbers.
Great.
Uh, just to, to build on that, is that a Sartell technology issue or a regional technology?
Regional, so our CAD and, uh, our computer assisted dispatch system, which, and our, our records management system is run by the county. The one we're operating under is pretty legacy and, and not capable for, of a lot of things. November is our full switch over date, so we'll have a little bit of true data from that, uh, starting the end of this year. But then really into next year, you'll start seeing a lot more quantifiable data come out of that.
Great. It was, uh, just a comment then on the report, the list of accomplishments you had, um, was really great to see. And I think it's just, um, interesting to see how those accomplishments feed into who we are as a community and that. What we're trying to build as a community, so need to see from police in particular, um, cause it's not always easy to do that in your line of work, so.
Thank you, and that is, I mean, everything we've tried to do is, is my and all of the leadership over there's interpretation of what the community wants to see and be a part of. Um, so obviously lots of input from you guys to keep that adjusting as the future goes.
Uh, you have a pretty young staff, as you mentioned earlier, I mean, is there anything that you need from us to help them kinda feel comfortable and get acclimated? Or are they, how are they fitting into the?
So far, so good. I, I think, uh, it was interesting, I went to, we had our PD party on Saturday at the, um, bowling alley. And I got there and, uh, Mackenzie, who's one of our newest hires, still an FTO, was sitting there with her significant other. Uh, enjoying herself and relaxing and that's uncommon, uh, in the law enforcement world. Like to have a probationary trainee show up at your party and be comfortable and talking to officers. It shouldn't be uncommon, but it is. I'll be honest, our culture is very closed off like that and rookies oftentimes kinda get. So the fact that she was willing to show up and come there, Emma was working that night, but she came with her FTO and stopped in. Uh, and was able to quickly, you know, have conversations and laugh and have fun and I think that speaks to the culture piece of the building over there. Which is really positive, the, the sergeant promotions that you guys approved the last meeting was huge. When you consider our entire night shift, uh, at one point in time here, once these FTOs are off, will be under two years of service. Uh, protecting our city at night, having a sergeant available twenty-four seven for them. And so building up that staffing number to, that's really the staffing plan I presented and trying to get those three extra officers for next year. To support them to not have to be running the city alone, uh, for a couple hours in the middle of a night shift is definitely like. Especially the newer generation of law enforcement, we're noticing a huge difference in what they're training in the schools, the curriculum, uh, that they're coming out with. Doesn't necessarily lend to some of the skills we would expect, uh, an officer alone in a city of twenty thousand people to try to manage, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire.
Mayor, members of council, I'll do my best to follow that up. I don't have a dog, I don't have.
Where's the Dalmatian?
Best I can do is pull a couple firefighters to help with it possibly here, so. In front of you have a annual report for fire. Um, probably one of the, the neatest things that I've been most involved with and really, uh. I think it was a goal by council when I came here was to develop a new dashboard, more visibility. Um, with that, a lot of the data in here you're seeing is from our new dashboard that we rolled out in twenty twenty-three or early twenty twenty-four. Um, part of it, you will notice a couple slight discrepancies, um, as we look at the annual calls for service, we had a rare drop this year. And the actual number is a hundred eighty-one, so that's one of the things we're still working through is, is, uh, getting all of our data tied in perfectly. So, we continue to work on that and throughout twenty twenty-four and as we roll in the new dispatching system, we're gonna have some better visibility with that. Some of the way it transfers across, uh, we're, we're able to actually now, we have some validation rules that we're setting into our image trend. Which is our reporting software, so we can add in like five new rules and, and then hone in this data further and then we can add in five more rules and hone it in. Our firefighters don't always like it, cause all of a sudden they get these red flags when they're doing our reports and then I have to go back in and fix it. But we're continuing to work on that to get it down, but as I said, it was kinda neat to see this year, we had a rare drop in it. Um, unfortunately, we're starting to make up for it this year, partly into the year, we're already at seventy calls in May, so. I, I believe a lot of that comes through the fire prevention at the city of Sartell, is if you look over the four years that we've had or three years of data in here. Uh, we're very consistent in our calls for service. A lot of that has to do with all the fire prevention initiatives that the city's done for years. And, uh, continues to put a high level of, uh, care on. Obviously, we added a part-time fire inspector in twenty twenty-three to start shadowing, um, Butch and that, that's really paid off dividends. Uh, Adam's really been able to step up and help us out with, uh, Butch moving on, so, um. We'll see different, uh, some different looks in the fire prevention side of things and kinda how we attack that and how we start to move forward in twenty twenty-four. With our annual fire spec- inspections and just to have them fresh eyes on some of that stuff, so it'll be kinda neat to see how the data continues to move forward. Uh, another area you'll see in here is our community involvement from our firefighters. They're kinda the, uh, the silent, um, city staff, right? They're, when we're going home for the day, they're coming in or nights and weekends, you know, they're always involved. We had a ton of, uh, community involvement again from our folks and just wanna really thank them for, for all their time on there. As you can see, we have a pretty robust list of all the events that they, they attended this year. Uh, we're constantly being asked to help with different things, even this weekend, uh, we had a birthday party at the station that was part of a raffle for. For what, uh, for a donation that was given and, uh, we do, we kinda limit those to two or three years just because they're usually Saturday or Sundays and trying to find help. But, um, another great area this year, uh, put in the grants and donations that actually landed in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we had a fantastic year for that, almost four hundred thousand dollars of grants and donations. Uh, obviously, one of them was a huge grant, the tender truck that's gonna be, it's actually moved up and will be delivered in December. Originally it was gonna be in February of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, sorry. It's moved up to December now, um, so that, that truck wouldn't have been possible without this grant, so we're pretty excited about that. And then just some other grants from the community that we've been able to put into all kinds of different pieces, uh, fire prevention. We, we take a lot of it and put it in fire prevention, stick it back into the community. Um, obviously, we have a ton of events and a ton of people that visit the station throughout the year, so I have enough money to help with kids with helmets and. Just literature and different things like that is important, so. You know, the other, really, uh, we continue to work on just development policy, everything else throughout the department. Um, one rare thing we have, kinda like PD has a lot of young staff right now, fifty percent of the fire department is under five years of service. And about seventy-five percent is under ten years, so we're, we're really looking at the recruit or retention portion of it to make sure that as we look forward. Five, ten years out, that we're hanging on to some of these folks. We're really holding steady right around the thirty mark. Seems like we gained one or two people and then one or two people move off, but we're, uh, we're staying consistent. Um, good outlook, we actually added an additional, uh, application period in the spring. Typically, we just do one in the fall, cause we have four applications right now, so we're hoping to add one or two more yet this year. With that, I guess I'd be open for any questions you have.
Council, any questions for the fire department?
You said you don't have a dog. Apparently, there's one on the screen, a Dalmatian. Suit looks, or the skin looks a little tight. I wonder.
It's a very, very nice dog, yeah. That was actually donated by, uh, one of the families that purchased, uh, the fire department, uh, birthday party as part of a raffle, so. I don't know, good question, Tim, who's that?
Looks like that Dalmatian has a bad paw or something.
No, no, it's got pretty good paws. Has a really nice sporty car to drive around, but not mine.
Uh, chief, I, I think on the PD side, we heard, um, Brennan talk about, uh, see something or something doesn't seem right, call it in, right? Looking at your report, I mean, twenty-four, twenty-five percent of your calls as a department are good intent calls. Um, anything you'd highlight there?
You know, good intent can fall under pretty much any other category. Um, sometimes it could be a, a wrong address dispatched, you get there and it's, um, maybe they thought they saw somebody that was hurt and they weren't, um.
Sure.
I, I couldn't tell you exactly without pulling up each one of those. Uh, one of the trends that you do see a lot is multifamily dwellings and fire alarms. We obviously have, uh, it's kinda a tweak, you may even dial it into certain buildings at, at certain times of day. You have burnt food, you know, in some of the elderly communities and everything else, but. Yeah, multifamily dwellings continue to be really the, the area that we are putting the most focus on because they're the highest risk, highest population. But as far as the, when you're asking for Ryan, I don't, without looking up.
Yeah, I guess the one thing I would share is just, you know, if someone's alarm's going off, like, don't worry about calling the fire department, right? Like, there's not a single person in your apartment that would mind going to check on an alarm versus have someone go to sleep with an alarm going off. Thinking it's a dead battery and actually it's a carbon dioxide alarm.
Yeah, with that, actually, that's a good, um, that's another fire prevention initiative that's been extremely important. The, uh, retired firefighters actually, um, work with the city and they'll go, um, through donations, we donate batteries to them. And they'll, they'll go out and they'll, they'll, through fire prevention week, they'll go to all kinds of residences throughout the community, change out smoke alarms, change out batteries. And they've done an amazing job with that and seems like we get, uh, a ton of phone calls just thanking us and it's like, no, this is the retired firefighters, uh. They have their own separate group that does it, so that's, I think that's been a huge asset for us as far as the, keeping the numbers down as well, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend you quickly, both you and police on, you go through this list and how many events you guys are involved in the community. It's, and I'm sure you stopped because your list is long enough, um, and then the events that I go to is, you guys never seem to have a shortage of those volunteering, which is great. Um, and then Peter, you know, on yours, I think one thing that doesn't always get noticed is on top of your org chart is the residents. Which I think is important to recognize, I, I appreciate that and, um, I think it speaks volumes about what both departments do.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'd second that. I, I counted, there's thirty-six community events that you guys, I mean, that's a lot over the course of a year. Um, just the only question I had was, I know in your intro, you kinda talked about some budgetary and financial challenges. And just wanted to expand upon, like, similar to what Tim asked, like, what, what the department needs or what we should be thinking about futuristically.
Yeah, you know, I, I do see in the next three to five years, we definitely need to consider adding to the fire inspection team. I mean, obviously sooner would be great, we know that the city is really focused on good financial management and, and we respect that. And we're looking at, on our side, how we can do that. Uh, without a doubt, like I said, we can, we could either be proactive on the fire prevention side of things, get into our multifamily dwellings, our rental dwellings. And even our commercial businesses annually, every two years, every three years. It's just where we wanna get that number is down to an annual basis on all these, um, and that comes through our fire inspection team. So, looking in the future and trying to find that, that right spot to do that. Rather than being reactive and seeing our calls get to three, four, five, six hundred and then having to add full ti- additional full-time staff just to run calls. So I think that's, that's probably the biggest area we're gonna have to look at, um, and really plan for, so trying to get ahead of that. Early would be probably the biggest concern going forward, um, obviously with the grants and donations, that's helped to shore up a lot of the stuff.
Great, thank you.
To follow up on that, I, I think, um, I don't know if the number was identified, but over the last few years. Uh, the grants and the, the opportunities to go get equipment and donations like that have been probably underrated. I, I think that, you know, we're, we're getting a tanker and, uh, you know, we've had grassland or fire, uh.
Wild one?
Wildland, thank you. Wildland equipment donated, um, I think that proactively, uh, it deserves a thank you. Cause I, I think that comes with some time of writing and researching and actually pursuing it and paying attention. Because that comes to your bottom line and, and we might not see it as a, you know, you present them periodically, both PD and, and fire. I think that's a, a nice asset to have two aggressive, you know, chiefs that are out there looking for those. So, uh, from the city, I think it deserves a thank you, so.
Thanks.
A- absolutely, I, three hundred ninety-five thousand, you documented as grants and donations for the year. Um, it wasn't too many years ago, our entire fire budget for the year was like two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Right, like, that's amazing and hats off to you and then, uh, last thing I would say is, is you look at your department, you talked about thirty strong. And, and growing and getting applications, um, a lot of our neighbors are contracting, right? They're looking to other neighboring departments to hire them and contract them for fire service. Uh, because they're not growing to the point where you guys are, so, uh, great job, keep it up and thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Community development.
Mayor, members of the council, um, in your packet is my annual report. It looks a little different than in the past. Um, I just wanted to make it more personal and focus on our team members and the work that they've done this year. Um, I just wanted to highlight, um, of, all of them in a different way. Mark Finn, our chief building official, focused on his commercial reviews. Focused on his commercial reviews, obviously, this past year, but then in our quieter, slower times, he really focused and dedicated himself. To learning the fire aspect side of the commercial plan review, um, more as of a. More knowledge for him to understand those inspections and those reviews and how. Fire and building interact when there's new commercial and even remodels that um, are completed within the city and he actually did just get. Delegation from the state, um, to be able to do the fire sprinkler reviews, um, and he's really being a mentor for Adam now. And helping him learn the aspects of the building side as well as Mark learning from Adam. About the fire side of things. So they're really working as a team this year, um, especially, and hopefully continue that as well. Um, as part of the building official training grant that, um, Peter did receive this year, so. That'll be ongoing this year and it's so far, it's been really great to see them work together. Nate Bonsley, our building inspector, just passed his building official test, which is great as well for our team, so. In instances when Mark is out on vacation or just out in general, that we have a backup internally. That Nate can complete reviews and inspections, um, and in the past, we've really just had to notify the commercial. Projects that we had someone out for the next week or whatever that may be and had to delay projects, but now. We don't need to do that, which is really great, um, and will be a huge asset this year because I do believe we'll be. Relatively busy with commercial developments. And then Jill Hongkamp, our development specialist, she helped and assisted. With John at Public Works, um, preparing for his um, retirement and hopefully. Getting everything ready for Lisa as best that she could, um, for that as well, and she enjoyed it. And um, really took on that task great this year, so it was really good to see. All of them work together and do something, um, individually as well. Going through um, into our actual permit and inspection side of things, you can see that we had nineteen hundred eighty permits issued in two thousand and twenty-three. Which is down from the previous year in two thousand and twenty-two, um, however, inspections increased dramatically. This is due to a few different um, aspects. One is our new system was able to track each individual inspection. Um, where in the past, we actually were doing that manually and often were missed, so now in each. Um, permit, we are able to track how many inspections are completed for each project. And then we also had to clean up permits from the past two years for storm with damage, so. Although we had less permits issued, we, we were pretty busy with um, inspections throughout the year. We did have four new commercial permits and twenty-one new home permits issued. Um, in, within the city this year, which is on par for the surrounding area of cities our size as well. I did include a QR code if you want to see the exact permit list and days to approval, days to completion, if you're really bored. And want to look at that, but that is there. You can also click on it if you'd like. I just, instead of putting it all out there. It's a lot of information that you might not want to look at, um, right now or ever, but it's there and you can look at that as well. Going into our permit valuations, you can see that we did have one of our historic lows for permit valuations at just over twenty-three million for the year. This is due to a few various differences, I think, or reasons I think, um, we're well aware of. We've had elevated costs of building materials and construction labor. I also believe that is part of the bubble effect from, um, the COVID-nineteen pandemic, uh, as well, fluctuations in interest rates. We did see some developments go through the approval process and not, um, come to fruition, but are still pending, just waiting on interest rates. Um, out there as well. And it also comes down to when these building permits are paid for and approved. Um, for instance, Aldi was paid for the previous year, however, most of the construction took place in a different calendar year, so that's where. Um, we need to think of that when we do budgets for the year of making sure that we are not. Budgeting poorly and really just staying constant at what we can think of, um, for actual permit revenues and not. Just base it upon, um, previous year or things like that, so. Budgeting for future, we are being more conservative and making sure that if we do exceed those. Um, budget goals, then we're putting that money, um, in a reserve elsewhere instead of just aiming high and hoping for the best, um, which isn't. The greatest. But on a positive note, um, so far this year, we do have, um. New commercial permits coming in, um, already with valuations exceeding eight point one million and we do have. A few commercial projects that we are anticipating, um, getting in shortly for building permit and site plan approvals. Um, and I do expect those to come in between. Anywhere there, the newest one that I anticipate coming in this week will be about two million and then the next one could be upwards of twenty to thirty million, depending on. Um, size, so we will be busy with commercial as well and we already do have twelve, um. New home permits this year, so it's looking rather bright because so far, um, last year in June. We only had seven homes, so we're already above that. So it's looking better, um, however, we're just. Kind of see how it plays out with interest rates and things like that. Um, I was rather busy this past year preparing for, um. The developments to come with many public hearings, planning commissions, outside meetings, um, and. Just I wanted to track this for future to really see what my workload is, um, and how there's a lot of meetings that go into. Um, and decisions that go into developments prior to actually getting the building permit in and that's where a lot of this has, um, come from. And then I just highlighted our planning commission that did incredible work this year with, um, solar development and. Make, and making that solar ordinance, um, as well, and that was really a task that they took on and. Took a lot of time and put a lot of thought into that, so I wanted to thank them for that because often they are not the most. Known and heard about members of the city, but they do a lot here and make really great recommendations to council. And give good feedback to staff prior to bringing it to council, so. I really appreciate them and all the feedback they give us, but with that, I'd take any questions that you may have.
Yeah, a couple of things. First off, you had mentioned about how many outside meetings and actually if you go back to when Scott was here, I know one of his quotes was to get out there more. Um, so I just want to applaud you for getting out there in the community. Um, second one would be in, um, developments that haven't gone forward. Has there been any trend to? Um, our fees are too high, a lot, lot sizes, anything like that that you've noticed?
Um, not specifically, um, in fees being too high, um, since I've been here and even looking back to, I think it was. I haven't looked previous to two thousand and sixteen, we haven't increased our trunk fees or anything, um, since then. And even Saint Cloud just imposed trunk fees, so I think we're, and we've compared to. Local areas on trunk fees and development fees and we're right where we should be, if not a little less than surrounding areas. Specifically, Sauk Rapids is, um, significantly higher than ours for trunk-related fees. Saint Cloud is doing a tiered system of their implement. Implementation of their trunk fees, so right now it's less than us, but they'll come to where we are, um, within the next year or so, so. Mainly, it has been interest rate issues, um, and securing funds for that, um, for housing developments. Especially with construction costs, um, really having a large impact on why some of those. Housing developments haven't gone through, um, similar issue for commercial developments, just waiting. To get a lease signed and things like that, um, interest rates have played a big portion of that.
Counsel, any other questions?
Carrie, as far as the permit valuations go, do you have a sense for if our neighboring communities have experienced similar? Or is it more central to Sartell?
Um, I, I would say it's pretty similar across the board, um, especially in this area that, um, they did go down. Um, however, we don't have a huge industrial area, so you may see some cities with significantly higher valuations. However, we don't have industrial space, so if you would remove some of that industrial space and really look at like the houses. Specifically where, where everyone else is in align with that, but. We are a little unique and we know that we don't have a lot of industrial space, um, for that.
Right, thank you.
Uh, Carrie, you had mentioned twenty-one or twenty-two new house permits or?
Yep.
Is there an area or? Style house that seems to be more trending at this point? Is it affordable or is it, is it based on region, area, somewhere? What's driving those numbers and, and what might, can you tell, shed some light on that?
Good question. So earlier in the year with our first, um, ho- home permits that came in, they were significantly. Higher than normal, um, ranging from seven hundred to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. Um, towards the end of the year, we are getting more affordable, um, homes coming in around three fifty to two fifty. Just in valuations and this year we have seen more, um. Homes coming in at that two fifty, three fifty valuations and they're getting sold before they're completed, so. Um, builders are taking advantage of getting them sold and really building on the open vacant lots and purchasing them and. Building homes, um, relatively quick and in a manner because they're going quick at the price level they're at.
So are they basic lots just scattered or any of the developments that we've kind of fostered through, you know? Northern Meadows or anything like that, I mean?
It, they're primarily, um, around Nottingham area that we've seen, um. Builders take advantage of the vacant open lots because they're standard lots, um. With typical setback requirements, but they're able to do what they call spec homes on them and really, um. Put them up rather quickly, um, and get them listed and sold, so. It hasn't been the more unique lots. We have sold a few up in Saint John's Court, but other than that, it's, we've seen a lot, um. Along nineteenth here is a lot of the development this past year, year and a half.
Thank you.
That's really good info. I mean, those have been, it's kind of been an island for a little while, so awesome to see that before some new developments come on. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, last annual report we have is the public works and engineering.
Yes, good evening, mayor, members of council. Um, you have our annual report for public works and engineering. Um, just stepping through a couple of highlights for the year, uh, we were able to wrap up a number of those large reconstruction projects from two thousand and twenty-two, you know, we got. Nineteenth Avenue paved, Scout and Dale, Hundred One, um, so it's nice to see those opened up and finalized. Um, and then really is a shift to looking at, um, future success of the city and all the studies that took place, um, so there were. Multiple studies related to the flooding at Grizzly, um, we had obviously the West Side feasibility study, um, which will. Turn into construction soon here, and then we looked at some of those projections for as, as far as population and updating those. Um, working closely with Rob and the rest of staff on upcoming sewer and water needs and, and helping to set the city up for, um, some of that. Future success with those. And then tying closely to that, um, it's just the large number of grants, so you can see the. Um, number of grants that were awarded this year, um, and then also just the large number of grants that are upcoming and pending. Um, I think that really speaks to, um, some of the success of previous studies and, um, a lot of our work with staff and. Being able to set up, um, all those future projects and all that funding that's coming in and as you can see, many of those pending grants are. We're hopefully hearing back in the spring here, um, a couple of months, so very hopeful that, that'll lead to a lot more projects in the city and. Those are primarily focused, as you can see, on the Mill District and on that Grizzly flooding that kind of covers, um, a majority of the grants there and so. Um, really highlighting those priority areas within the city and, and looking at the future development there, but. We'd be happy to answer any questions related to engineering and public works.
Any questions for engineering and public works?
Just a quick question to follow up on. I know that the, uh. The park project that we did for the mountain bike trails, that, that got finalized this last year. Um, have you got much feedback? Is there any corrections that we've done? Do, how's that looking?
Yeah, um, yeah, Tony, um, and the Parks crew did a great job. After that was finalized, they were out there this past summer. Um, put up a lot of the signage and so yeah, if you go through there, you can see all the new signage and stuff like that and working with the high school on that project too. Um, that was a very cool collaboration. Um, I don't know if we've gotten much feedback and all, um, April's been out there a couple of times.
I try to get out and frequent them quite a bit with my kids, um, but in working with Tony, there's been some local organizations with some of the youth programs. To get some kids out there and on mountain bikes, um, so I know he's been working closely with them to try and get that set up. Um, every time I'm out there at least and I know when Tony's out there working on it, um, there's people out there using them, so I think it's used quite frequently.
So the land swap that we put together with the Bridge to Nowhere is kind of a win-win on that?
Yeah, we were able to put a lot more trails in because of that land swap, so that was very beneficial.
April's a fantastic guide if you wanna, want her to take you out there on a bike.
Might want to work undercover first.
I mean, Mayor Fitzsimmon and Councilmember Smith have both been out on the, on the trails, um.
Survived.
Survived, yeah.
Helmet didn't fit when I was out there, but yeah.
I, I mean, Mayor Fitzsim, we.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just, I just was gonna echo, um, I know Hunter alluded to it, but the, the grant completion, the amount and the. Pending is, is significant and that's fantastic for the city, obviously, so, thank you.
And welcome aboard, Lisa. All right, we have, uh, monthly reports, finance.
Yes, good evening. Just a monthly report tonight. I kind of double the audit and financial presentation. As my annual report, which will occur next meeting. So if you have any questions on the March financial dashboard, I'd be happy to. Answer them.
Any questions for finance? See you none. Uh, admin?
Mayor and members of the council, you have my monthly report as well. I think the biggest item that I will call out here, um, nearing completion is our mill site redevelopment study. So we've been working on that for several months now, um, with AME consultants and in June, we'll be looking to make a final presentation to. Council for approval on that redevelopment study. That will encompass two different components. Um, likely a revision to our, uh, comprehensive plan, um, because the mill site is called out within that plan. Um, but then also, uh, just an overall adoption of the redevelopment study signifying both the importance and. Um, the critical steps forward that will need to do with marketing that site and preparing for redevelopment, so. We're excited to see that final redevelopment study. It is by far one of the largest engagement efforts the city has undergone. And it has been very comprehensive and will be critical as we move forward and I, I think Hunter and April can speak to this already of. The grant programs that we've been able to apply for and show that we did the heavy lifting on the engagement side. Has been a huge benefit to us in applying for those programs, so kudos to the council for having the, um, foresight. Knowing that we would need that work done. There's more work to do. We're excited to dig in, get this approved and, and get started to see. Really truly what kind of development can take place there, so we are nearing the finish line on the study, but that's just the beginning.
Any questions for admin? Thank you. Uh, city commission updates.
None at this time.
None. Council committee updates, miscellaneous business, Tim?
Um, just thanks to everybody at the reports this year that really insightful and good recap, so. Appreciate all our work and I know it's not, no fun to put them together, but we appreciate it.
I'd echo Tim's comments and, um, just thank everybody for the comprehensive reports and they all looked very pretty also.
Yes, I would agree. It's the CLE engagement that all, every department has in the community and then the culture that each, um, department has built. Um, as well as, is great to see, so thank you.
Yeah, ob- obviously echo all that, uh, great work by everyone that contributed to the reports. Um, one other item that I'd bring forward, it, it came up at our, uh, metro bus. Meeting, uh, last Tuesday, board meeting is, uh, and Lisa was gonna look into it a little bit further. Saint Cloud wastewater treatment plant, um, Mayor Kleist had spoke to the board about. There's a, uh, twenty twenty-five, maybe twenty twenty-six, they would actually be able to start producing hydrogen, uh, and green hydrogen. Um, so if we think about, as we talked tonight about all the different grants that our departments have been able to, uh, leverage, state and federal. Um, at a federal level, there's a lot of grants for electric vehicles or green initiatives. Uh, this hydrogen, I'm learning, also is included in those, so it's really electric or green. So it's really electric or green hydrogen uh, equivalent. So knowing that we're a um, stakeholder or owner in the regional wastewater treatment plant, uh, it would be the first municipal treatment plant in the world, according to Mayor Kleist, um, to produce hydro, green hydrogen onsite. And so the reason for the conversation at the Metro Bus was, hey, as we think about ordering buses into the future, we might think about hydrogen because we'd be creating that internally. The four cities that um, that make up the board for Metro Bus are also uh, part of the cities that are in the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and so I'd encourage us as a, as we think about, you know, well into the future, um, that being a possibility. And it seems like that would be, you know, even a better possibility than some type of electric vehicle. Being you can transport that hydrogen in some ways, so. Uh, super interesting, I found it extremely interesting of what that future might be, uh, and have it here in our local area, so. Exciting times ahead, I guess. Um, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, we're adjourned.